Watch that, and we have, we have some recognition, recognition of not only the 4H BB team, but we have the five and six-year-old USSA World Series champions with us tonight. We're going to recognize prior to the meeting. The BB team is first on the list, so the five and six-year-olds gonna have to wait for them. They are the national champions, Walton County's BB team. And I will let Michelle Patrick come up and tell us all about what they've done, and we'll have them come up for some photos and recognitions.
Okay, wonderful. Hello, everyone. My name's Michelle Patrick. I'm the new 4H agent here in Walton County, and I'm absolutely thrilled to be here. So, thank you for giving me the honor of introducing our team. Should I have them come up as I call their names?
Please.
Okay, perfect. So, as I call your names, please come on up. Bethany Shirley, Mason Harper, Levi Fuller, Madison Baines, Sidney Harper, Maddie Glaze, Caleb Feltz, and Tyler Feltz. And I did want to run over a couple of highlights for y'all. So, of course, we're very proud of our BB team. They've been working really, really hard. And I guess it wouldn't be fair for me to not mention right now their amazing coaches, Jamie Goitier and Adam Harper, if y'all want to come on up.
Yeah, the coaches come up, please, too.
And so, they've been working all year, and aside from winning the national championships out in Arkansas, which is a huge deal, I also wanted to announce that this team had the highest score ever in Dacey National history. As well, our second overall shooter in the entire country is with us, Ms. Bethany Shirley. So, we are very proud of them. If everyone could please give them a huge round of applause. Awesome. And then, I guess my last final note for you is I just wanted to thank you all very much for your support. There were multiple counties in the state of Georgia that actually had to drop out of the competition because they lost county support. So, your support means a lot to us and our team. And I think it's also important to mention that we do have the biggest team in the state. So, we're very proud. Thank you.
Thank y'all. Yeah, be fine. I know these commissioners want to be in picture.
Run, run, and run.
Glad to see you here. Can say I worked on the national champ, yeah.
You have, right?
That's right.
If you want to wave at people at home, we're live streaming, so you're up there. Good job, good job. I want to let y'all know, I coach 4H here, BB. And to get these kids to be that safe and that good of shots takes a lot of work and a lot of practice. Good job. Mark? Hey, you talking to somebody else, but that's okay. Good job. Mark Banks says good job. He, he's got COVID and, uh... Okay, the five and six-year-old, who's going to present this great... Please come up and tell us about your accomplishments, and have the kids come up, please.
Hey, thank you very much. I'm Jane Biko, Senior Athletic Coordinator for Walton County Parks and Recreation, and it's my great honor tonight to recognize and honor our five and six West Walton All-Stars that went all the way to New Orleans to win the USSA World Series. And at this time, I'd like to bring the head coach up, Wesley Spires. Wesley's gonna talk a little bit about his journey and how they got to New Orleans as being the champions. But I would also like to say, this is our second year consecutive with our six U being champions for, for representing Walton County in the USSA. So, we are so proud.
So, boys, when I call your name, y'all come stand by the trophy, okay? Mason Spires. Camden Lemmons. J. O'Leary. Stefan Davis. Deckett Lanier. Jackson Severance. Ryder Wilson. Zane Friesley. Dominic Riggins. Walker Ward. Brantley Shepherd. And coaches, y'all want to come stand with the trophy also? We got Corey Ward. Justin Shepherd. Ryan Lemmons. James O'Leary. This set of boys right here have fought so, so hard to win this World Series trophy. The first weekend, they played substate at City Pond in Covington, first-place win. Then we started having three to four days a night practices a week in ninety-degree weathers. It was hot, they sweated, but they fought hard the whole time. The next weekend, they went first place in... They won the first place there. And again, three more weeks of three to four days a week practices. Then we took the trip to New Orleans. Before New Orleans, we put a big fundraiser campaign together. We had three weeks to raise money for the families. So, with the help of all the families in the community here in Walton County, we was able to raise eleven hundred dollars per family to help us go to New Orleans with our community. We'd like to thank all of our supporters who helped us get there. Once in New Orleans, these boys had a hard journey ahead of them. There were some very good baseball players there. They went seventeen and four, but on the last Saturday they played, they wound up in the loser's bracket, meaning they had to win double elimination, so they had to beat the same team twice on Sunday. But guess what? Y'all boys got there at seven-thirty, y'all beat the first team, and worked hard, beat the second team, and beat 'em two times in a row on Sunday. Good job, boys.
Good job.
Good job.
Good job.
Good job, guys. Thanks, guys. Thanks, coaches. Appreciate you. Thank you. Yes, sir. Thank you. Good job.
We're going to give those that want to exit just a minute or two to exit, and then we'll start with the county manager's report, and then we'll do the pledge allegiance and open up the meeting, call it to order. So, thank y'all so much. You make Walton proud. We're proud of you. Great job. Great job, everyone. It's a great county to live in.
Good to see you.
Oh, you're welcome. So awesome.
Lee's sick, too.
I knew something was up when he couldn't make... It was right here. We called him today, Patrice. I got Patrice checking on him. If we could shut those doors once the last one of them get out, so the chatter, so we can hear the county manager and his report of what's happened in Walton County with the county government this past month. John, you're up.
All right. After those two, this is gonna be a little mundane, I'm afraid. We've added, since January first, in the water department, we've added three hundred and three new customers and new meters, so we are over seventeen thousand forty active customers to date. The high usage in July was eighty-three percent with an average of seventy-four percent, and that was some relief of the previous two months where we reached a hundred and four percent. So, we were, um, the, did benefit greatly from the cloud cover and the rain that we had in coming forward. But we did also experience with some of that rain, some storm damage, and do expect in the amount of nearly ten thousand dollars of tree removal at the water department itself in that area due to some of the large trees that were impacted. In fire, they responded to three hundred and sixty-four incidents. The fire marshal's position has been filled, and we'll have introduction of that position. Had a hundred percent pass rate of the EMTB National Registry, and then completed two hazmat, well, one hazmat drill with Social Circle supporting our industries along the I-20 corridor. In animal control, they responded to two hundred and eight calls. Forty animals were adopted, thirty-nine were transferred to rescue agencies for the month. In nine-one-one communications, we are currently short eight communication officer positions that we're struggling and really working hard. So, the admin staff, just give them a shout-out. They have themselves been working twelve-hour shifts to help supplement communication staff. We do have three new hires, but it usually takes about three to five months to fully train them so they're released to work on their own. The Board of Tax Assessors, two hundred and sixty-two of the six hundred and forty-six total appeals have been resolved. The Board of Equalization was scheduled to meet throughout August and September, and all appeals are scheduled to be finalized by October fifteenth, twenty twenty-two. In June saw four hundred and seventy-seven new deed transactions across the county. Board of Elections has filled the warehouse technician position. Like to welcome Katie Crawford to the Walton County team. A reimbursement grant in the amount of twenty-five thousand five dollars and thirty-three cents has been received to offset the cost of mailing out new registration cards, and we now have seventy-five thousand nine hundred and ninety-two registered voters in Walton County. In EMA, Carl is working with utility companies to map their services in the event of an emergency or disaster situation. We've had a, scheduled a new Community Emergency Response Team class that'll be starting August eighteenth, and will be, go on for consecutive eight, uh, eight weeks after that. That's a FEMA program that helps train volunteers for disaster and emergency response. And EMA will also be hosting a Georgia Environmental Management Association class with Intro to Search and Rescue. Emergency Services had one thousand five hundred and seventy-two calls for assistance, transported six hundred and seventy-four individuals, and received over two hundred and seventy-eight thousand dollars in collections. And our last ambulance that was ordered over, most over a year ago, has arrived, and that puts our fleet in very good shape at this point. Extension Service, year-to-date, Walton County Extension has collected and processed over four hundred and fifty-one water and soil samples. Eighty-five Walton County fourth and fifth graders attended Camp Cloverleaf at Rock Eagle. We just saw the BB team, but we also have 4H Modified Trap Team won first in the state competition. So, we were moving forward with a lot of success throughout the county there. In Parks and Recreation, the summer programs are wrapping up, but the largest season is the fall season, and that'll begin the start of baseball, softball, cross-country, football, cheerleading, and soccer, and all of those different sports play about at the same time. Teams will start participating and practicing in early August, and that will run through October. But also, we've reached a milestone in Parks and Recreation. August two, twenty twenty-two marks twenty years of the department, of when the department was established. They've grown in many ways over the past twenty years. They've upgraded several regional parks and constructed two new regional parks. They have eight neighborhood parks, three community centers, and they have over two thousand members that enjoy active lifestyle at the different facilities that we have across the county. They've added several miles of paved walking trails, including Meridian Park, that's heavily used as an exercise area. It has two miles of trails that go around the pond, through the woods, and connect to West Walton Park and Meridian Community Center. Ayers Park is a unique park that includes a dog park, pickleball, eighteen-hole frisbee golf, and nature trails, and a very busy splash park that has averaged over fifteen thousand years, users over the past two years. And it's become a place for summer birthday parties, youth groups, daycares, and, and different things like that. Sports programs have nearly doubled over the last twenty years while we've added sports programs like volleyball, summer basketball, cross-country, and track. Just like to congratulate the staff of Parks and Recreation on twenty years and what they've all been able to accomplish. And I think with the discussion of some of the additional parks and trails that we've had with the commission, that we'll see additional investments in quality of life features like that. In finance, the new payroll clerk has been hired, and we'd like to welcome Jennifer Kilgore to the Walton team. Malden Jenkins will be here Monday, August twenty-ninth, to begin the annual audit of the county's finances. And Doug Eves will be in attendance with the county as we, on August eleventh, as we begin our second meeting of renegotiation of loss between the county and the cities. In planning, we've surpassed eight hundred and ninety-eight building permits, already more than all of twenty twenty-one. And at single-family permits, we're up sixty-four for a total of two hundred and ninety-seven Revenue has exceeded eight hundred and forty-one thousand dollars, and impact fees are nearly eighty-nine thousand dollars to date. In Public Works, the crew, grass crews have started round three of right-of-way maintenance. Paving has been completed, Paddock Road from Jersey Social Circle Road to the cul-de-sac. Marsh Camp Road from Broadnecks Mill Road to Atkinson Road. High Tower Trail from State Route eighty-one to the Newton County Line. And paving has started at Sandy Creek Road and Sandy Creek Court. Walton County Recycling and Keep Walton Beautiful. One thousand nine hundred and twelve cars crossed the scales this past month. Forty-nine tons of recycling were diverted, and over twenty-six thousand dollars of recycling revenue was generated, along with revenue for disposal of household garbage. And we already have over a hundred and fifty volunteers confirmed for the October twenty-second Rivers Alive River Cleanup across Walton County. In Administration, we've got multiple grant applications that are underway involving trails, water, and public safety. And I'm currently working with the Industrial Development Authority and Meta, also known as Facebook, to ensure Walton County has a hundred percent broadband coverage. This'll impact us for educational purposes so that all children have access to broadband when they're at home in order to help with their schoolwork, as well as preparing additional people for employment in the new created jobs that we've got going on across the county. And I'm also working to bring you Walton County's first draft of their first ethics ordinance for your review and approval as a commission. So, with that, Chair, that concludes the manager's report for the month.
All right. Thank you. All right. We will stand and say the pledge of allegiance and have an invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in its name.
Father, thank you so much for this day, and please watch over us as we make decisions for the county tonight. Guide us and help us to make the right decisions. Please be with everyone here and keep them safe as they leave and go home tonight. It's in Jesus's name we pray. Amen.
Would you turn Mark's speaker on? Okay. Uh, we have two commissioners absent tonight. Mr. Bradford and Mr. Banks both need a good wish. They come down with COVID. I think Mr. Bradford is, whole family has it. And Mark has gotten over the fever and the chills and is a little peppy, but he doesn't want to risk coming here, so he's on the telephone. I'll call the meeting to order. Roll call will show that we have Commissioner Dixon, Commissioner Shelnut, Commissioner Adams, and Commissioner Warren present, and Commissioner Banks participating via phone. Since we have a quorum, he can vote just as if he was here. You have the agenda in front of you. Are there any additions or deletions that need to be done to the agenda? Hearing none, I hear motion to adopt the agenda. So, move. And second?
Second.
Second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Is unanimous with all present. All right, we'll go straight into the Planning Commission, and Sharona, generally, you have some interesting items to show us.
Yes, sir. Okay, the first case is approval of ZCU two-one-zero-three-zero-zero-two-six with condition. This is a application to rezone property to A for animal rescue and conditional use for an event facility. The applicant and owner of the property is Lisa McNair. There's two properties, one located at forty-nine thirty-one and fifty-twenty-one Center Hill Church Road. This is in District Two. The applicant would like to rezone her property for animal rescue and event facility for kids to have parties, do horseback riding, fishing, and school field trips. The request includes a ninety-acre parcel, which is this parcel right here, and a two-acre parcel.
Okay.
The two-acre parcel has an existing dwelling. The applicant stated that she has had activities in the past with twenty to twenty-five people, and recently had as many as sixty in attendance with a local school. There were approximately twenty-five people at the Planning Commission that were there in support, and a few of those spoke. There were three residents that were opposed. The Planning Commission recommend approval with the condition that on the two-acre track, that the occupants be limited to fifty people.
Okay. All right, I'll open a public hearing on this application, and if the applicant is here, please come forward and tell us what you got planned, and, and if the board has any questions, they would like to ask you, and then we'll follow with opposition.
How you doing, sir? Everybody? Thank y'all for being here. I'm Lisa McNair, and I guess I'm here to answer whatever I'm supposed to, but basically, the outlined area is what I consider like an office area or where we've done our little events in the past. Just wanted to have that involved with the land that's in the back, that goes all the way back to Rabbit Farm Road, and basically make it one area so that we can have fishing, little folks that just received awards today, that they can actually have a place that they can go for maybe the commissioners to say, hey, you, you've got a free day to come and have a festivity of, of, of winning. We just want family fun, absolutely no alcohol, absolutely, except for clean family fun, which is what I grew up with. It does involve animals. We are an animal rescue. We have, we do not rescue dogs. We do not rescue cats. I don't do snakes, and I don't do spiders, simply because I don't understand them. But most anything else that's there, we, we give a, a good shot at it.
Pull the mic down closer to you because they can't hear you at home as good as we can right here across from you. Thank you. All right, any questions of Ms. McNair on the operation, what she's doing? Hearing none, thank you.
Thank you.
And I give you a chance, if there's opposition, to rebut.
I appreciate it.
In a minute, thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Is there anyone else here that came to speak in favor of this rezone? Please come forward. We'll do those for it, and then we'll jump to the ones against it.
Ask them to have everybody stand that's here in favor.
Hello, everyone. My name is Lacretia and James Klukin. We live exactly right up the road from her, so we are on the same road as she on. We take our nine grandchildren down there to her festivities she has on Saturday for the bounce houses, for the animals, to teach them things that they don't see on a regular basis, like the camel, the donkeys, and different things like that. So, I don't have a problem with her being there. They can even use our yard for parking if necessary. It's just a really great family road, and most of the families there have been over there for like forty years or more.
And it's really wonderful having a place like this very close by where we can actually take our grandkids and just really have a good, fun, wholesome day.
Okay.
And to jump around and have few kids the way they...
All right. Thank you. Any questions? And y'all's name, again?
James Klukin.
And Lacretia Klukin.
Okay. Thank you. How many people are here in favor, please stand? We would like to see. That's what I suspected. Thank, thank you, Dr. Adams. All right. I still gotta leave it open for everyone that wants to speak. If, if you feel the need to, I think you just said a lot by standing up, but if you want to come say something, please do. Those in favor, and then we'll open it up to the opposition.
He wants to say he's ready to be there.
Nobody get reelected if they didn't like children, you know?
My name's Holly Valahose. I've lived at fifty-one forty-one Center Hill Church Road my whole life. I moved away a couple times, but I always come back. I've known Ms. Lisa my entire life. The big boy in the purple over there, his fifth birthday party was held at Ms. Lisa's because my grandmother passed away, and Ms. Lisa stepped in and handled it. Everything she does up there is wholesome. Everything she does is for the kids. She goes by Christ. She shares everything that she can with these children, even the special needs kids. It's great therapy for them, what they go up there and do. We take our kids up there just to see her animals. They love it. There's nothing better than going to Ms. Lisa's house and seeing her animals. So, I just wanted to say, hopefully y'all have it in your heart to keep it going and grant her application because she's doing nothing but good things there. It's nothing, it doesn't impede anything on that road. She has it all set up to where it's safe, and it's a happy environment for kids and families. That's all I wanted to say.
All right. Thank you very much. Anyone else? Anyone else? We're still hearing the ones in favor.
Hey, I'm Hillary Wilson. I'm actually a special education teacher for the county, and I've known Lisa multiple years. And just working with her, whether it's with the students at the schools that I teach at or outside the school, is just the love that she has and the passion she has for what she does to allow our students that would not have the opportunity to work and be around animals, which is, again, as I was pointing out, is a great therapeutic thing for them, but also a great lesson for them to learn. You know, just having her in the county and having these opportunities available for anybody, especially our schools, when we have so little anymore for them, that's why I feel that having her and the property there is actually something we need to continue to have here for the county.
Okay, thank you very much. Anyone else in favor?
My name's Stephanie Moncrief. I serve on the city council in Walnut Grove. I came from the high school today. I'm very involved in our community. And that involvement started at the elementary school level when my son was at the school. I did the PTO there, was instrumental in getting the electronic sign there. But the important thing is, is that I have called on Lisa McNair for fall festivals, for different events, and she's always there. She gives and gives and gives. At points when we don't have enough money to be able to do everything we want, she says to me, what can we do? What do you need, Steph? She just selflessly gives of herself all the time to our community. And in a world where our children are faced with so many different challenges and experiencing so many different things that perhaps I, when I was growing up, didn't experience, to be able to have a facility like this where our kids can go and enjoy the benefit of old school, it's just a blessing. Thank you.
Thank you. One more, all right?
I'm Michelle Tarian, and I'm actually on the back side. I'm on the Rabbit Farm side, so her property backs up to mine. I guess I have a hard time understanding why there's a problem with it because her animals don't impede or bother.
I can't hardly hear you. You're going to have to speak a little louder. I heard you say you can't understand.
I'm having a hard time understanding why there's a problem with the zoning, I guess. I don't understand why anybody would oppose it just because she's, it's animals.
Well, everybody gets their opinion.
I know, I get it, I get it. But as a neighbor, she doesn't bother us, and I see no issue with it.
We're still supposed to be a free country, so...
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you.
All right.
Anyone else in favor? Everybody's really opinionated on this, it looks like. Please come forward.
My name is Gina Powell. My husband Scott's up there. We live on, I couldn't see the map too good, but we are on Rabbit Farm Road right next door to where the driveway comes out for Ms. McNair. Sorry. I have no problem with it. Out of everyone, I feel like that it would affect our family the most as we are next door to her, and I could not imagine better neighbors than animals, you know? So that's all I wanted to say.
All right, well, thank you. Thank you. Let's be careful with that one, you know? All right, anyone else in favor? Okay, those in opposition, would they please step forward?
My name is Tim Thompson, and I live next to this property.
Tim Thompson?
Correct.
Yes.
I sent everybody a letter here outlining what I was about to say. I was hoping that each one of y'all had a chance to read it. Did y'all?
I got it.
I live up against every bit of this property, not just the two acres up front, but the whole 90 acres. As I like to told Lisa before, that I want her to succeed in business to support her and her family, but this must be done in a commercial area. This business is a very noble effort. There's, the business itself is not an issue. It's the good things for the county. However, it needs to be in a commercial area. In fact, I've been a very good neighbor to Lisa. I have allowed Lisa any request she's asked of me about the use of my land on multiple occasions. I do not think Lisa or any of her supporters here would want to see me and my family destroyed by this zoning change if it was really known about the full ramifications of the zoning request. And let me explain how the destruction would take place. It will lower an enormous amount of value in my home and surrounding land by about $500,000.
Can I stop you right there and ask a question, please?
Yes, sir.
Do you have an appraisers opinion of that?
No, but I am in the real estate industry.
So am I.
Okay. And now...
And I go on appraisals and...
And I really don't think anybody would build a $500,000 home right next to the two-acre property up front with porta potties out front.
Okay, thank you.
So, yeah. Now, I don't know if that's a lot of money for others, but this amount represents me working 50 years of very long hours and attempting to save from my biggest investment, which is my home. It's the same situation of most citizens that basically have their home as their biggest investment. This also destroys any ability of me to retire since I will no longer be able to rely on this investment to see me through my retirement years. My only option now would just be continue working until I die. So, yeah, this would destroy my family and the rest of my life. Like I said, I don't think Lisa is the type of person that would want to destroy another person in their family. She's not an evil person, a bad person. She wasn't, wouldn't want that to take place at the same time. This isn't a situation where we're two competing businesses, where the dog-eat-dog world of business allows for one business to destroy another business. This is my home. I built in this area because the county land use plan has this area as residential. This is precisely why commercial and residential areas need to be separated, and zoning change requests should not combine commercial and residential so that all citizens can have their home value protected and not have their lives destroyed by these type requests. Any type of commercial activity in a residential area will infringe on our ability of enjoyment of our residential living and dreams. It's been mentioned by the applicant that this is a desire to go back to the old Lugenville values. These old Lugenville values would not have allowed for the destruction of a neighbor. Destroying my life does not have to happen. I've listed four options. I'm sure there's a lot more options if somebody gave it the proper time to develop. Lisa can move this venture to her 10 acres off of Highway 20. That's already in a commercial district. Number two, Lisa can sell her real estate holdings that the counties have valued at $3 million and move this venture to a commercial area. Number three, Lisa can move all aspects of this venture to her 90 acres away from the two acres. Get the two acres out, leave it back as residential so that, have everything completely out of sight of neighboring lands. In this situation, the two-acre tract should remain as R1. It can be used as a rental property, which is very much needed everywhere, and can be very profitable for Lisa. Every item relating to the business should be removed from this two-acre tract so it reverts back to the residential character that it was intended, including any storage. Four, I would be willing to buy the two-acre tract in order to keep the residential nature intact. If any of these options are used instead of the zoning crest, then I'm willing to drop my request to have all the different fences that are actually on my land be taken down and moved to her land. This is probably about a half a mile long of fencing. Otherwise, the end of August of this year should be ample time to remove these fences. This is, like I said, it's about a half a mile's worth. Consideration should be given to the tax income of the county. I should expect my property value and other neighboring residential properties to be decreased by the Walton County Tax Assessor's Office as a result of this zoning change. Presently, her 90 acres is already in a special reduced 10-year land covenant. Therefore, Walton County is only receiving about 20% of normal taxes for the 90 acres, which means that all other citizens, everybody here in this room as well as all citizens of Walton County, are making up for this reduction in their higher property tax bills. And I have no clue how much Walton County receives annually from any sales tax of this venture. I don't know if that's ever been looked into. I've given a huge list at the end. If it is accepted, there should be some requirements that should be given for this 90 acres, like everything should be out of the sight from the streets and out of sight of the view of the neighbor's residential property. Parking plan to be established. I mean, sometimes the parking is on my land. Portable restroom should be removed. No signage, no lights, especially not the blue lights that are on, as a mobile unit that she has that has been up there. There should be ongoing inspections of the animals, should be vet inspections. There should be a control list of the type of animals, safety measures for any citizens living near it. Basically, the citizens of Walton County must be protected at the local level because the state of Georgia is very lacking in any enforcement capabilities. So now, basically, the ball is in your court. The rest of my life is in your hands. You have the choice. I do not. So are you going to vote on one of the options that worked for everyone, like I mentioned? Are you going to vote for what will basically be the destruction of my life? Thank you.
Hold on just a minute in case any of the commissioners have a question of you, please. Thank you. Do any of y'all? They didn't, but I needed to make sure. Thank you. Okay, is there anyone else here in opposition to this? Okay, I go back to the pro. If the applicant would like to respond to Mr. Thompson's comments, you have that right at this time. And if you don't, that's your choice, so... You have to come to the podium, please, so we can try to record everything.
Start off with, I don't remember a whole lot of what's said because I'm, I guess I'm keyed up a little bit. And so I asked Dawn that works with me, also is like a daughter to me and has been since my son was six years old, so, and he's now 24, so she knows pretty much my life and that sort of thing. I'm definitely not here to destroy anybody or anything. I was almost in tears a while ago listening to the folks that had something good to say about what I have tried to do for the community, and it's, I have not called any of these folks to let them know, you know, that please come and talk for me or anything along those lines. So my heart says, thank you. I appreciate you. I love y'all with whatever I can do for you. I'm always here, whether we're opposed or whether we're not. I just thank everybody. If you don't mind, I'd like for Dawn to answer some of the questions that Tim had.
If you would like to respond to those comments, that's your right now.
Yes, sir. My name is Dawn Norton, and I just was trying to review some of the things that he had mentioned. I'm not aware of any blue lights. There is no mobile unit. We work with animals, so we finish long before dark. We don't have lights up there for nighttime use. It's a daytime facility, so there are no blinking lights or blue lights or any type of mobile units. I'm not sure what he's referring to. As far as licensing, Lisa works very closely with USDA. She works closely with DNR. Actually, Walton County Animal Control calls her if they have an issue. She's rehabilitated animals for them. She works with Aware, which is an organization in DeKalb County that works with owl, deer, any type of wildlife that needs to be rehabilitated, they call her first. People in this very room, they're her go-to person if they find a squirrel or a chipmunk or a skunk. She got a call today about a skunk. She stayed up all night last week about a deer.
We're trying to address what he said. We understand the operation.
Sure.
And bear well, so...
I understand.
He's concerned about his value and the zoning itself, but...
The only thing I'll add is about the portage on. She had some, a special needs group come to visit her facility last week and she, or several weeks ago, and she had the portage on there as a convenience for them so that they wouldn't have to go very far to use the restroom. So that's the reason the portage on there.
All right. Any questions from the board?
Ms. Chairman.
Yes, sir, Ms. Banks.
Could you get Ms. McNair back to the podium, please?
Yes, sir, I'm here.
I got a couple questions for Ms. McNair. How long do you own that property?
I've actually owned my property where my home and the other 90, almost 98 acres, actually. We bought it December of 99, so a little over 22 years. And we've owned the other two-acre property. I believe I purchased it in 2004 or '05 from Mr. Brooks, who is the uncle to Tim.
When you have these events, do you ever have anybody leaving and falling down front?
There's no alcohol allowed at all, sir. I won't allow it. Even if I smell it on you, you gotta go.
What about any drug use on the property?
It better not be.
And you're having birthday parties for children?
Yes, sir. I want to have...
Okay, if I'm going to approve, would you agree to, for this rezone, to follow the ownership of the McNair family? If it changes hands, it would go back to the original zoning.
Yes, sir.
You'd be okay with that?
I have no problem at all. Only thing I want to protect is my family. If something were to happen to me, that my son could carry on with whatever I've started.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. McNair.
All right, thank you. Any other questions from the board? If not, I will close the public hearing and entertain a motion from the Board of Commissioners. Thank you, Ms. McNair.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, y'all.
Ms. Chairman, I move that we approve the rezone with one condition, and that is that the rezone will follow the ownership of the family. And if any changes hands, it would revert back to the original zoning.
If I get you correct, if they quit operating it or sell the property, the rezoning goes back to the original zoning.
Yes, sir. My fear there is some shady character buy the property and have an event center, and then we kind of lost control.
Okay. All right, we have a motion.
That's the rezone and the conditional use.
That's the rezone and a condition added to the rezone. What about the limit of 50 people on the two-acre tract that was recommended?
No, sir. I was going to remove that because there's so many chaperones, parents and grandparents come when these parties are going on that many times they, 20 kids and 70 people.
Okay. All right, so...
I'd hate to tell a parent or grandparent they couldn't come.
All right, the motion is to approve it, and if it is sold or if they quit operating the animal rescue, that it reverts back to the original zoning. Correct?
That's correct.
I'd like to second. All right, we have a second. Do we have any further discussion? All right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? Pass is unanimous. Thank y'all. All right, Sharona, we can go to the 4.2. And if y'all, welcome to stay. If you exit, try to hold down the chatter until you get outside, please. I think that would be fine. I think that would be fine. Sharona, we'll give them just a minute. Looks like a large crowd is exiting. Thank you all for coming. Come back when it's not in your neighborhood. A lot of neat things go on down here, and more people need to come, so.
Can I say my answer?
Yes, ma'am.
We're going to have a low country bull at the office area where we do the billings, and everyone is invited. 4931 San Antonio. I will email Sharona and let her know the exact date that it's going to be next couple of weeks.
I love those things. I duck hunt in Louisiana all the time, and they can really do them, so.
I'm from Lucas, that's 72, so I don't have a chance.
Thank you all. And you got a lot of wonderful friends and neighbors. You're very blessed. I think half of them's waiting for the elevator, so it's gonna be a while. Sharona, go ahead. They're being very nice and quiet.
Okay. Approval of Z22060001, rezon 11.40 acres from M1 to A1. The applicant and owner is Norma Billingsley. Property's located on Green Avenue. This is also in District 2. If you remember, a couple of months ago, this property...
We just rezoned this to the M1.
It was just a couple of months ago. It was rezoned to M1, and they had someone that was going to purchase the property, and the purchase did not go through, so Ms. Norma just wants it taken back to A1.
Hey, Ms. Norma.
Yes, there was no opposition, and the Planning Commission recommended approval.
Okay. I will open the public hearing on this, and if you or your representative come tell us why we're turning the zoning back the other way.
Thank you, Chairman Thompson and board. I'm Jim Billingsley, and I live in Walton County at 2834 County Line Road in Covington, and I'm here representing my mother, Norma Billingsley, in her application for this rezon. She is asking that 11.4 acres that she owns on Green Avenue, it's actually landlocked now, but I guess Green Avenue's the best address for it, asking that it be rezoned from M1 back to A1. And as you are aptly recalled, we were here not too long ago, I think it was April, and had this rezoned to M1. And I want to, right now, express thanks to the board for working with us during that process and the rezoned applicant. Unfortunately, the applicant chose to only purchase the seven acres that was on Georgia 20 and not this adjacent 11.4 acre tract, and therefore, Ms. Billingsley requests that the board approve this rezon back to A1. She has, she actually was able to sell a piece of property across Georgia 20 and get her some much-needed funds to do some home repairs, so she's going to just let this sit and let me and my brother deal with it at some time in the future, so.
Okay, sounds good. Thank you. Any questions from the board? Thank you. Is there anyone here in opposition to reverting this back to agriculture? Seeing no one come forward, I'm going to close the public hearing and ask the board to make a motion.
Ms. Chairman, I move to approve the rezon.
We have a motion from Commissioner Banks to approve this.
Second.
We have a second from Commissioner Shellnut. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Oppose? Pass is unanimous. Thank you all.
One caveat there, Mr. Thompson.
Yes, sir.
Tell Mr. Billingsley he owes me some Malox for the original rezon.
He said he needed some Malox from that original rezon, and so if he did... I didn't hear nothing. All right, let's go to the next one. Thank you all.
Okay, 4.3 is approval of Z22060006, rezon 3.46 acres from A1 to R1 to create one additional lot. The applicant and owner is John William Bush, Jr. Property's located at 660 Wood Hill Drive. This is in District 1. And the applicant purchased the property, and they're going to pay to run the water down the road, and they would like to split it into two lots. One will be 1.10 acre and then a 2.35 acre tract. There was no opposition, and the Planning Commission recommended approval.
Okay, and they are going to run water down the road because...
At their cost.
Without water, it has to be two acres.
That's correct.
Okay. Okay, is, I'll open the public hearing on this, and the applicant is coming forward, looks like, to tell us what he's wanting to do.
Good evening. My name is John William Bush, Jr., and we, myself and my brother-in-law, plan on building two brand-new houses here, and I've already actually paid for the water line. It's 1,500 feet of water line. It's also going to bring two needed fire hydrants down the road. Mr. Hamilton, that owned the property before, his house was a complete loss, and that's how we got the property because there was not a source of water for the fire department other than what was on the trucks. We're going to build approximately a 5,000-square-foot home on the two-acre track, and my brother-in-law's going to build about a 3,000 to 3,200 square-foot home on the other track.
Okay. Any questions, gentlemen? If not, thank you.
Thank you.
Is anyone here in opposition to this rezon? I like ease. If not, I'll close the public hearing, ask the board for a motion.
Ms. Chairman, I make the motion that we approve.
Got a motion from Commissioner Warren.
Second.
Second from Commissioner Shellnut. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? Unanimous. I see we're locked.
Okay. All right, the next case is approval of Z22060008, rezon 56.536 acres from A2 to R1 OSC for residential subdivision. The applicant is Reliant Homes Georgia LLC. The owner is MFT Land Development LLC. Property's located at 816 New Hope Church Road, and this is in District 1. The applicant, like I said, wants to develop this into an R1 open-spaced subdivision, 56 acres, 27 lots. This does comply with the character area, and there was no opposition, and the Planning Commission recommended approval.
All right, thank you. I'll open a public hearing on this, and if a representative or the applicant here come forward.
My name's Ned Butler, representing Reliant Homes and MFT Land Investments. As stated, we are proposing to develop a 27-lot subdivision on the highlighted parcel combined with the 10 acres that's south of that that fronts New Hope Church all the way from Double Springs down past the river. So those two parcels are being combined for this subdivision. And we will build, we are currently building homes in River Green, which is on Hope Lane, just to the southeast, and we'll build the same style of homes in there.
Okay. Any questions from the board? I have one. Why are there only 27 lots on 56 acres?
There's a good bit of flood plain along the Alcovee River.
Okay.
And then there's...
So that's the Alcovee River, the blue line that comes down the map?
Yes, sir. And then on the west side, past the river, we get out of the flood plain, but we'd have to cross the Alcovee River to access it.
Which would be cost prohibitive?
Yes.
Okay. All right, thank you. Is anyone else here in favor of this, like to speak? Is anyone here in opposition to this that would like to come forward and speak? Very good. I'll close the public hearing and ask the board to make a motion on this.
Chairman, I make the motion that the board approve.
We got a motion from Commissioner Banks.
Second.
I mean, Warren, I was thinking about you, Mark, I'm sorry.
Thank you, brother.
And a second from Shellnut. Thank you. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Oppose? Unanimous. 4.5.
Okay. This is rezon three acres from A to A2 to create two buildable lots. Applicant is Roy Nunnely Roberts, Jr. Owner is Roy Nunnely Roberts. The property's located on Nunnely Farm Road. I kind of highlighted an area there. This is in District 5. Like I said, they want to make two one-and-a-half-acre tracts, and there was one person that spoke in opposition. They just had concerns that it's a very peaceful area and wanted to stay that way. Planning Commission recommended approval.
Okay, thank you. All right, open a public hearing on this application, and if the applicant or representative wants to speak, please tell us what we're doing.
Thank you. Ms. Chairman, Roy Roberts, Jr. here. Ms. Parker pretty much laid it out, exactly what we're trying to do, just taking three acres, going to split it into two one-and-a-half-acre lots and just sell them. They're acres we're not really using out on the farm right now, and just saw the opportunity.
Okay. Any questions of the applicant? Thank you. Is there anyone else here who wants to speak in favor of this? Is there anyone here wants to, in opposition that wants to speak? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and entertain a motion on this application.
Chairman, I make the motion we approve.
We got a motion to approve it.
I'll second.
We got a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Oppose? Pass is unanimous. And your last one.
Yes, sir. Approval of Z22060024. This is to rezon five acres from A1 to A for a dog kennel. Applicant is Marshall Roberts. Property owner is Roy Nunnely Roberts. The property's located at 54 Nunnely Farm Road and Liberty Hill Church Road. This is in District 5. The applicant, like I said, right about where this arrow is right here, it's about in the middle of the property. He wants to convert a barn into a 35-dog boarding kennel. And there were some residents that had concerns about traffic, and this opening the door for future uses. The Planning Commission recommended approval.
Okay, thank you. All right, I'll open the public hearing on this request, and if the applicant or owner would like to come tell us what they're wanting to do.
Hey, Commissioner, I'm Marshall Roberts. It's pretty simple. She's, she said it, she pretty much summed it up. 35 kennels. It's in the middle of 500 acres, she didn't mention that. So there won't be any, any sounds or smells, no aggressive breeds. There'll be almost zero traffic because it's a pickup of the dogs versus people dropping them off. So that, two vans in the morning and two vans at night, or in the afternoon.
Okay. Any questions from the board? The property's already zoned agriculture. Why are we having to review this?
This is going to A. So right now, it is A1, and the A...
Explain to me the difference, please, because agriculture's agriculture.
Agriculture, you think. Okay, but a few years ago, 2003 to be exact, the board decided that for commercial agricultural uses to be protected, then they created the A zoning category. So whenever you have a farm, horses, anything new that's going to be used in a commercial agricultural-type use, the rezon for A is requested. Normally, it's approved for that use only, so that it doesn't leave that property open to...
I was just sitting here thinking, he could build a hog parlor out there, and it's not a thing the county could do about it.
For personal use. He couldn't create one and start selling.
Oh, he couldn't sell, he'd have to have a butcher shop, but...
And he couldn't do that in A1.
Okay, I'm just asking.
We're just keeping him straight, yeah. But that is the purpose. It was for commercial agricultural uses.
Okay.
And it's just really to protect those type of uses.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Marshall. Is anyone else here who would like to speak in favor of this? All right, is there anyone here who wants to speak in opposition to this? Wow, okay. I'll close the public hearing on this and entertain a motion from the board.
Chairman, I make a motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve.
I'll second.
We have a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Oppose? Unanimous. Thank you. Thank you all. Just want to let you know, I really miss your dad. Okay, resolutions. The first resolution is adoption of Walton County's mill rate, and Milton's coming here for that. In the previous meeting, I made the announcement that the article ad that we're required to run in the newspaper by law is very misleading. It says that we're looking at a mill rate increase. We are not. We are looking at the exact same mill rate we had last year. That's the way the budget was prepared and based on the mill rate of last year. So, and that's 10.413.
Yes, sir.
And go ahead, Milton, I don't want to take no pizzazz away from my finance director.
That's okay. Gentlemen, thank you for being here. The millage rate would stay the same at 10.413 and a 1.335 fire tax.
And that's the exact same as it was last year.
I want to say, can I make a comment about the ad? The ad, as I think the chairman mentioned, we have to verbatim put that ad in the paper. The state requires us, tells us what we have to say in the ad. It is misleading. If you don't take the rollback rates, you have to advertise a tax increase, even if you keep the millage the same as...
That's correct. Years back, when property values started dropping in '08, '09, the mill rate was increased, and they didn't have to advertise it as a tax increase because the values actually dropped. But I'd like to make one statement before we adopt this. In preparing for the millage rate meetings, I discovered that in Walton County, we're a county that has a homestead exemption freeze. I'm trying to, I didn't realize it was big as it is. When you file for homestead exemption in Walton County, your home and up to five acres of land, value is frozen at that time. If it's a $200,000 home, we tax you 40% of $200,000 as long as you own that house. It doesn't matter if the value from the tax assessors goes to $2 million. You're still taxed at that frozen rate for county tax purposes. Has nothing to do with school, has nothing to do with city taxes, but for county tax purposes. There are 20,734 parcels frozen in Walton County today. That's out of 41,157 parcels total. So a hair over half of the parcels, their values are frozen for county tax purposes. The county bills, the school tax, which we're fixing to adopt their mill rate, and the city's taxes, so your total tax bill will show more, but if we don't move the millage rate, you don't get a tax increase from Walton County on the homestead exempt properties, and that is pretty good. There's 26 counties out of 159 in the state of Georgia that have this. We're one of them. Thank you, Milton. The mill rate is 10.413 for Walton County. We'll need a motion to adopt this mill rate.
And the fire tax.
And the fire tax mill rate, yes, of 1.335.
3.35.
3.35.
You've got a resolution that you're actually adopting.
We'll adopt the resolution that we have here.
I make a motion to approve.
I'll second. Any further discussion? Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Oppose? Passes unanimous. Thank you, Milton, on that one. We have a resolution for the Board of Education's mill rate. And I didn't look it up, but uh-
It's 17.737.
Seventeen.
Point 737. And they have a debt millage of 2.134.
2.134 for their bond.
Yes, sir.
Okay. We have to adopt their mill rate, so entertain a motion to adopt the Walton County Board of Education mill rate.
Motion and mill rate be approved.
You got a motion?
Second.
You got a second? Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? All right, we have some budget amendments, 5.3.
There's, there's a number of budget amendments. If you have any questions, I'll go over them briefly.
They're all listed here. As we go through this year with the inflation and everything we order, they come back and it's a little bit more or whatever, and we have to adjust budgets. We'll be doing it every month. Entertain a motion to accept these resolutions on the budget amendments?
So moved.
You got a motion?
Correct.
You got a second? Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose?
Aye.
Passes unanimous.
One opposed.
I'm sorry?
One opposed.
Oh, you're opposed? Okay. All right, we have a four to one vote. All right, we have a resolution adopting the project-linked budget for the courthouse number two. That's where we're renovating one of the courtrooms to accompany, accompany COVID and have social distancing so the courts can keep going if it comes back around. And it appears it is coming back around, but uh-
This was in the original budget in the general fund, and we want to move it to SPOAST.
So we're moving it out of the general fund to SPOAST?
Correct. There would be no effect on the fund balance.
Okay. Entertain a motion to adopt this?
So moved.
And I'll second. Any discussion, questions? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Oppose? Passes unanimous. All right, we got to, we're doing the same thing on the resurfacing projects?
It is just straight SPOAST. It's the seasonal-
It's a seasonal resurfacing that we have to dedicate funds from SPOAST for.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Entertain a motion to approve those?
So approved.
We got a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? All right, we got a project-linked budget for the Public Works Parts Building?
Yes, sir. This project was, most of it done in fiscal year '22. They'd like to finish it in '23, using the balance from SPOAST.
Using the balance from SPOAST, okay. Entertain a motion to approve this?
Want to approve.
All right, we got a motion?
Second.
You got a second? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? That passes unanimous. And we got intergovernmental agreement on transportation, local option sales tax. This is putting the T-SPOAST on the ballot. We met with all the cities. The election board will meet Friday if we pass this and move, put it on ballot. And this is going to try to get 1% sales tax passed by the taxpayers for transportation projects only. The good part of it is that the state on all state jobs will match dollar for dollar, really more than dollar for dollar, it's 1.4 to $2 for every dollar we raise for state improvements. And the number one complaint I have in this office is when you're going to do something about transportation. It's very expensive to do it. It's a bad timing because of the inflation that's going on out there to ask the taxpayers to pay another penny in tax. We've added walking trails and bike trails to a small portion of this. And we've got some very needed intersections and extra lanes needed in this county to move people around. And I don't want property owners paying for it, so that's why we're putting it up for a vote. And we'll need to approve this ourselves. The cities have approved it. And entertain a motion to approve?
The resolution that you have in your package which also authorizes the adoption of the idea.
Okay.
Calls for the election.
It, it authorizes adoption with agreements between the cities and sharing it.
Yep, I make a motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve it.
Second.
We have a second. Any further discussions or questions? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? Passes unanimous. Do we have any questions on the administrative consent agenda? We have the minutes, we have the county's purchases $5,000 or more. We're accepting an agreement with the Walton County Board of Education to add more school resource officers to the schools, and they're going to reimburse the county for that. These nationwide shootings are responsible for that. And then we got our normal inmate medical agreement that needs to be signed. All those in favor of the administrat-, I'll make a motion to approve it first, someone.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
All right. And need a second?
Second.
Any questions or any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Oppose? Passes unanimous. Human Resources, we've got a proposed holiday schedule that we need to approve. Let's take off for the rest of the year.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Two additional federal holidays are being requested for approval as part of the 2023 proposed holiday schedule. June 10th, short for June 19th, is a federal holiday in the United States commemorating this day which marked and effectively end of slavery in the United States. And also Veterans' Day, which is a federal holiday observed annually on November 11th for honoring military veterans of the United States Armed Forces.
So we're requesting that too?
Additional.
And they're federal holidays?
Yes.
Okay. Questions, discussion, motion?
So moved, Mr. Chair.
We got a motion to do it?
I'll second.
We got a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Thank you. Passes unanimous. All right, the contract on A1, the shared savings agreement, John, is that the telephone analysis and communications?
Yes, it's an analysis, and it's a program that would actually provide additional resources to come in and look at our existing contracts. And it would not cost the county anything. There would be a shared cost in the-
If we save money, we pay them part of what we save.
Exactly.
Okay.
We do have the ability for projects that we're currently working on to exclude them from this agreement. But then in the end, if they can help us get additional savings above and beyond what we've already negotiated, we could utilize those services as well.
Okay. This is what John has done in other cities that he's worked in, and it should save us some money. So, and if it doesn't, it doesn't cost us anything.
Make a motion to approve.
We got a motion to approve?
I'll second.
We got a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose?
Thank you.
Likewise. Okay, the Walnut Grove property, we, we left a part out, I think, when we leased, advertised for lease for agriculture for one year. And so we had to run another ad on a part of the property where the park's going. And we had one bid come in, but we advertised it properly. And it's Paul Jones, 250 bucks for the rest of this year. So I assume he's going to cut hay or whatever on the open field the rest of this year and need a, a motion to accept that lease.
I make a motion to approve?
Yeah, a motion to approve?
Second.
We got a second? Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? That's 200, that's 250 more bucks, so, all right, that passes unanimous. All right, appointments. We have an appointment for the O'Kelly Memorial Library Board. It's been recommended that Vicki Smith be appointed to the library board. Does the board have any other recommendations? Okay, entertain a motion to approve Vicki Smith as appointment to the O'Kelly Memorial Library Board.
So moved.
You got a motion?
I second.
We got a second from Commissioner Banks. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? All right, passes unanimous. And we need to name a voting delegate for the ACCG 2022 Legislative Leadership Conference that'll be voting, directing the ACCG on legislative issues. And I think that vote will take place down at their conference at Jekyll Island, which we have three commissioners going, Commissioner Bradford, Commissioner Banks, and I will be going to that to take some further education. We need to choose a voting delegate for the county.
Mr. Chairman, I move that Chairman David Thompson be our voting delegate.
Thank you, Mark. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 I'm going to abstain. And that concludes the appointments. Does anyone have anything they want to bring up for discussion? Does anyone have any announcements? There will be an announcement after executive session. We need to go in executive session to discuss real estate. And we'll be coming out and making an announcement. I hope we're not in there over five minutes, but we need to go in and make sure everybody's copacetic, and then we'll come out and tell you what, what's going on. So need a motion to adjourn into sec-, not adjourn, what's it? Go to executive session.
Just go to real estate, come on.
All right, we got a motion, second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Tim? Okay, entertain a motion to come out of executive session and back into the general session.
So moved.
Need a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Mark, you still with us? Mark Banks?
Yes, Mark. Get him on the phone.
John, get Mark on the phone again. Okay, we are remodeling courthouse NX1 right across the courthouse here. We have under contract the VFW for clinic for county employees. We'll be closing that this year. We've been trying to buy the no man's land between the clinic and this remodel, which is owned by an individual that we finally come to agreement to purchase. And it's the Coleman property, and we have settled our own price of $166,900. And that gets us that whole little block over there so we can upgrade parking, lighting, and be part of downtown Monroe's theme scene. And we need the extra space, we need the parking spaces. And entertain a motion to accept this contract and authorize the chairman to sign all documents to consummate the closing of this property.
I make a motion to approve?
We have a motion to approve the purchase.
Second.
We have a second? Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes unanimous. So we're putting together right across the courthouse. Sharna's happy. That guarantees her parking spaces that she'll need when code comes back up here. Any further business of the county tonight? Thank y'all for coming. We appreciate you. Entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
You got a motion, second? I'll second that one. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Hey, Keith Clay. Good to see y'all.
See you in the morning.
I will see y'all later. I got to get off.
That's fine. I'm not-